Well, I just sort of threw something together this afternoon and people may not have got it. It's just basically give us a order to talk about things.
I didn't get it.
You didn't get it?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the first email said it, um, first email I've got to do the attachment. Then I thought I'd send the second one, but.
I, I got it.
But, yeah, so basically I've got five things here. Introduction, review of present ordinance provisions, concerns. Everyone can express work plan. And then just adjournment, and this is sort of our first, first meeting. So, um, everyone know everyone at this point? Have you met Ray before?
Yes.
So, um, do we talk about the present ordinance or?
I guess one, just one question I have from the get go is just how does this, how does this group work then? Are we coming to consensus on, on a set of proposed revisions? Are we with simple majority? Are we going back to the planning board and the conservation commission and then like?
No, I think this committee, committee would come to its conclusion and bring them to the select board.
Yep.
And if the select board felt it should go up to the town.
Yeah.
With, you know, amended ordinance which has to be approved by a majority of voters that, you know.
And I thought that the conservation committee already had any list of like six items or so.
Yeah, well, we sent them a letter of concerns. I was just trying to like understand how the group would work in coming to our proposal here the select board. Do we all have to be in a hundred percent agreement on the list of proposed items or?
I don't think you'll ever get, well, you might get, but I think.
Some groups operate by consensus. Yeah, I've been part of those groups, so I'm just.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, it's a consensus. I mean, you could have a majority report and minority report, you know, to the, the select board.
Yeah.
But it's, it's basically, I mean, in the past, in the past, most of the ordinances revisions had gone through the planning board. You know, I mean, that was just a procedure, like the planning board would review a particular ordinance or graph a particular ordinance and go to a select board. I think in this case, it's a little different that we have this kind of select committee this week.
Steve, I still feel that it should come to the planning board.
Before it goes to the.
Like what? As a tweet, you know, my, we might, the planning board might teach some issues there that we've overlooked.
Can, can I ask, um, considering we have one array and there's a proposal for another? Can I ask Andy, because I don't have present ordinance in front of me? Can I ask someone who's very familiar with it, which I'm assuming is Andy, to review what issues are being, are appearing as a result of now having the arrays and seeing where the ordinance perhaps doesn't give the town guidance when making a decision?
I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't say that I'm necessarily expert on that in the room. But I also guess I say, are we jumping into that? I have number one for moving. Okay, yeah, so should we review the present order? Do you have an initial, that we can send it to Bonnie so that she can?
Well, it's in your booklet. Did you get a, did you get a copy of the comprehensive, um, ordinance or site review and subdivision? And it's, the provision for the solar start on page sixty-three. It's six point eight nine, section six point eight nine and following.
Is that on the town website?
It is, yeah, yeah, all the ordinance, yeah, it's on the town ordinance. And the, the solar is just one of the, it, it falls under site review. And so there are sections that talk about, that's all those pages.
I don't think I have it at hand.
Okay, and it is on the website. If you go to co enforcement officer and click on that, then it lists all the ordinances.
Okay.
I mean, I can recap just a little bit. I mean, basically, the ordinance tried to delineate different types of projects. What type of review process for each specific type? So you have things like projects that really are for residents. And those would have the least amount, well, that, those would not go through the planning board. That would just be a matter that the co enforcement officer would review it. It could be a simple review and I think there may be, maybe a sign off from the fire chief just to make sure things are, you know, wired correctly or, you know, there's not creating some kind of hazard. And then, then there are, um, medium solar. And the physical size is equal to or greater than fifteen hundred square feet, but less than sixteen thousand nine, nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. And then we have the large solar energy project. That would include the one up on the Ridge Road and the one that's now before the planning board on South Monmouth and Fish hatchery road. And so those have planning board review and more kind of stringent requirements. So the, the goal was that if someone wanted to put panels on their house garage or the round bouted ones that aren't large, that those could just be a permit process through the co enforcement officer. So I don't think there's any controversy about delineating those projects. And maybe there won't be, we can, we can talk about that. And, um, I know some of us, you know, as you go through, I mean, what always happens, I think, is when you have a project, you then have the benefit of seeing how the ordinance worked and whether anything was missed or, you know, language could be made clearer or change, you know, whatever. And I know one of the things for me, generally, I mean, since Monmouth doesn't have zoning, the purpose of the site review was in part to try to make commercial project fit in as much as possible with the residential, um, residences around them. And, and so there are, you know, standards about light, noise and buffering. And the, the provisions in the site review ordinance talk about buffering only from residential properties. And so I think that raises a potential problem that, that potentially maybe would mean that if it were just agricultural land next door on one border or whatever, they wouldn't have to screen. Or they might not have to screen along a roadway. And we tried to, you know, in talking with these projects that come in, so far we've been somewhat lucky that they haven't balked at our request that buffering be more extensive. And to give you an idea, the, the present project that's under review, we sort of raised that issue and they've sent us now an amended plan that has buffering on all, on all sides of the project except on Fish Hatchery Road. And in part, that's because it's really their own land that's there. They may be just a small jog near the South Monmouth Road, but that was one of the concerns that I had is that maybe we need to have better language in this ordinance, for instance, on, on buffering.
Yep, uh, can I ask? What is the definition of an abutter?
Well, the, the technical legal definition is someone who borders the property. However, we expand that in terms of notice requirements. And I think the ordinance says that anyone within five hundred feet of the project has to receive some type of written notice.
I asked because on that site review, part of the discussion was, and this led to, and they, they were amenable, but I think it should be put into the ordinance that buffering be put on all sides. And that, again, there's a house, a, a new house, relatively new, across South Monmouth Road that will look directly at that array. And so my question is, did that house, because it's across the road, does that homeowner count as an abutter? And the people across the road, um, on Fish Hatchery, do they count as a butters? And yet they certainly are affected, at least visually, um, by an array being put up. And so I wonder if, if it's possible to adjust that definition so that even though you don't technically fall into the category of a butter, that because of the way our roads are and, and that, that people be included even though they're technically not defined as a butters?
Well, they would get a notice. They would get a notice because they're across the street from the project.
But that's, it's more than five hundred feet.
Well, their land might, might, might be, I mean, if they're on the other side, if their land is on the other side of the South Monmouth Road closest to the project, they would be in a butter. They get noticed, but I mean, the, there's sort of two issues. One is notice and one is, you know, what do you do to fit into the natural environment as much as possible? I mean, you're never going to be able to screen that project fully.
Was the other issue, which is no language around, and I don't know if there should be, but is of what vegetation is actually appropriate for screening? I know in the initial proposal that the latest developer put forward, they just want to put, uh, a particular cultivar of arbor bitter on the entire thing. Um, you know, is that appropriate? Is that sufficient as a buffer? I mean, arbor bitter is a very slow growing evergreen and, and putting a single cultivar leaves it very susceptible to, to, to loss. So, yeah, I don't know. I, I'm sure there are opinions, all sorts of opinions about that in, in the room.
Well, the issue of a butters and screening.
Yep.
So that you mitigate, um, the effect on the surrounding area. And so I, yeah, I, can we include, as we, if we are going to revise the ordinance, to include specific language having to do with both the butters and the screening? And I agree with, with Andy, um, and Ridge is a perfect example. Yeah, they did planting, they died and they did no evergreens at all. So their little shrubs, again, half of them are dead and there are no evergreens, which means that those that survive leaf out, but they might not leaf out until the end of May and they're done by September. That's it, that's your screen and that's not, I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay, Bonnie.
Yep.
Well, may need is language in the elements that the screening will be maintained, properly maintained over the span of the project.
Okay, ma- maintenance is one thing, Ray, but if you're going to put small shrubs that are only in leaf for four months, then you're not providing a screen.
Well, maybe there should be language that's, you know, minimum of a certain amount of evergreen component. I mean, you know, it's never going to be exact, but I mean, that doesn't seem too onerous. You're gonna, you're gonna do, say it has to be at least fifty percent conifers or, or evergreens of some kind.
Well, the Ridge Road project, they went to Maine Autobahn. They made the recommendations, I think, on the buffer.
Right.
And it was primarily evergreen collection because it makes no sense to use deciduous for screening.
Yeah.
The, the thing you run into, of course, is, I don't know if any of you run in, ride into Gardner on High Street.
I was gonna raise that, that flag tonight when we're talking about property values and everything else. That thing is, oh my God.
The, uh, you know, and it takes time for those shrubs to grow. You're not going to see the benefit of some of those for four, five or more years probably.
That development though has to have been one in this closest to us that I just, I feel terrible for the butters. There's an example of, and yes, they didn't own the land and it's private property, but you know, I mean, that had a, that has to have a huge impact on the property values. I mean, that went from many hay field and cow pasture to panels right up to everyone. I noticed that one home right on the road is now for sale. And I just, which I've heard the same thing from a butters of this new potential project on the South Monmouth Road that they're, you know, that goes in. Like there's people blowing their speed.
Yeah.
And on the total screening of the project, what if the backside of that project butts up against a wooded area? I mean, you know, a, a serious forested area. You're going to require them to do buffering, planting on along the edge of the woods?
You gotta have some flexibility.
Right, yeah.
Gotta have some flexibility.
But at the same time, if you look at the current project on the South Monmouth Road, that company currently is proposing that they're going to come in and cut down half of the buffer strip between our property and their property. So that.
We gotta deal with it.
That also doesn't make sense. You already have existing mature buffer there. Well, there needs to be some language saying you can't do that either, which gets back to the other, gets to one of the, our other concern that we raised in our letter was just setbacks, what are appropriate setbacks? You know, is the standard ten foot, my understanding is the standard that appropriate, you know, for something that is industrial development as opposed to a
Right.
normal or what we're all used to, commercial or residential development.
We have fifty foot on the roads. At least that's a setback for structures, it probably fits the definition of a structure, yeah, but the sidelines are much, much different. And so, yeah, that's a legitimate, a legitimate issue for any, I mean, one of the concerns I had was when you set standards sometimes, can you really, I mean, some are going to have more of a visual impact, some are going to just have noise impact, traffic impact. But how differently do you treat solar than any other commercial development? So do we, it, it may raise the, the question of all the, all the type of buffers or all the types of standards we have, whether they need to be kind of adjusted? That we're not just focusing on, on solar. Like we had for the, we had for the wind line that there had to be kind of a fall zone, worst case scenario, if something fell down.
Yeah.
That it's going to fall down on the, uh,
Right.
developer's property.
Yeah.
Not on the, the neighbor, but.
I mean, that's a good point. I mean, I see solar, uh, the visual impact of solar is almost more reminiscent of a parking lot or something of that sort than just a traditional house, you know, when you look at the impact on the butters. So, yeah, I don't know, maybe it's, yeah, right. So setbacks were another thing that we, another issue that we raised was, well, we talked about this before the meeting began, but just agricultural soils. You know, what if a project is situated in agricultural soil? It should be requirements stating that they have to have some sort of agriculture, continue on that site. Or at bare minimum being some sort of solar grazing. Are there going to be standards, uh, one of the members of the conservation commission raised the issue of, you know, should there be standards around? Um, in other towns, uh, the, right over in Wales, there's a company that went clear cut a twenty or thirty acre lot that they're going to put solar on on the Lee Junction Road, you know, is that, should we have standards around that? And is that acceptable?
Well, is, is there any language that discusses the idea of dual use? Which in this case, um, could be, again, agricultural grazing. Um, and I, I, I don't want to disparage one of the company's representatives, but he repeated the myth that goats will eat anything. Well, they won't and you can easily, I happen to know a goat farmer who became quite incensed, actually, that goats were being disparaged. Um, there are one or two types of goats that can jump. Um, but goats do not eat metal and there's no reason why goats could not, in fact, graze on that land. Which brings up another question about whether or not the land uh, has been tested for PFAS. Do we know that? And should that be included? Again, that's another, and I don't think even, I don't know.
That's a wider question. I mean, that doesn't, not just solar.
No, that's.
You know, there was some, I think Carol Skidgill had some, you know, because we passed an ordinance in Monmouth on, um,
Flood.
Flood spreading, kind of in response to that, but we, we, early on.
Right.
But we really before the PFAS issue kind of became as, you know, front and center as it's become. But I don't think you just make that a standard for solar. But again, I mean, again, that's a bigger question, I think, beyond the, the scope of the solar provision.
I mean, I think back to your, I don't think we need to get in species specific sort of recommendations or requirements here, but just having, so our current ordinance has the recommendation that there be a dual use projects when on agricultural soils. I think the question is more, do we require it to be a dual use project when it's in agricultural soils? And what's far more common and works on thousands of acres all over the country and the world is these sheep for grazing as a bare minimum dual use requirement. There are much more elaborate dual use, uh, systems that actually involve other forms of agriculture, um, in the site. But most developers are going to balk at those, so requiring that I think is not really feasible. But, but.
I just wanted to defend.
Kind of just sheep grazing or something like that, you know, if that counts as dual use, I, I don't think that that's, uh, crazy. There's all sorts of things, some people argue, yes.
What was that, Joe?
What an APR you consider dual use.
Uh, I'll, I'll tell you what my perspective is relative to dual use. I think they should be encouraged. I, I think they should be an incentive as opposed to standards that are so damn tight that it becomes not practical.
Okay, so how do we incentivize it at the town level?
That's.
Right, it's not, yeah.
Top up some tax.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, well, they already don't pay any taxes down, so it's not much we can do now. I thought the state pays their taxes. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the way it's set up.
That one in Ridge Road, that, uh, didn't Justin say that that was representing, I don't know, the, the actual town owner?
I would think so, yeah.
My, my understanding of the community solar projects, so what these all fall under, it would be different if you're talking about a larger utility scale project. But these five megawatt and less commercial projects, my understanding is that, uh, the state as part of the incentivization of these projects, that's a word, uh, the state is actually covering the taxes, at least on all of the equipment. And then they're giving the towns a fifty percent cut of what that upgrade value is, is my understanding of how that law is written.
Probably we should find out, you know, look at that.
I mean, otherwise, yeah, incentives are great. I, I must prefer carrots to sticks, but I just don't know at a town level, is, is there is anything? I mean, it is being discussed in the, in this legislative session again, you know, is there, is there something that we could do? You know, is there playing with farmland's current use tax laws? For example, you know, currently you pull land out of farm use, current farm use, farmland use, you have to pay the, the penalty, you know, if you're in solar. Um, but you know, if you're going to do a dual use project, do you waive that, incentivize that? Then of course you get to the issue of who's actually going to monitor that or what kind of project? Yeah.
And again, that kind of, the, the bigger issue is if, if someone does another commercial, different type of commercial project and it's on farmland, should some of the standards, you know, again, be across the board? So I don't know, I mean, I, I think Auburn has come up with something because Auburn, Auburn for years, some, they have an agricultural zone, of course, they have zoning. We have a lot more flexibility in some ways. When you have zoning, which we don't have. So, yeah, do you, if someone takes land out of agriculture and isn't going to do dual use, do you have them pay some type of mitigation fee which then goes to preserve other open space properties? So it's there for refueling, some type of soil bank, those things.
And that, that is being done, I know that's, that's what Toxins has done with development in general. They have a mitigation fee, it's not incredibly high, it's like fifteen percent, I, I assume the increase value, I don't know what is fifteen percent.
So we have that in some type of form for subdivisions and other projects that can't meet osper standards. They pay a mitigation fee which then goes, say, to Calumsey Watershed or some other type of group to do remedial act, you know, use the funds for remedial action. But, um, I mean, you get into the whole big question, you know, versus, you, you like to have development go into areas where you have a sewer and water, you know, of course, it doesn't make a difference with solar, but just generally. You know, one of the things we look at on the comprehensive plan committee is, you know, where do you focus development? How do you make that work? And solar is one, certainly one type of development that takes a lot of land out of use for other purposes. But it, it kind of gets into the bigger question. What, what is the vision that people have for the town? How do you satisfy the rights of the population as a whole and the private landowner? The thorny issue.
Mitigation fees typically, in my opinion, are penalty fees, penalty fees, all the way it is. You got enough money, it's no big deal.
Solar companies seem to have enough money. So.
Yeah, I just don't like the term mitigation fee.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's still more of a, still more of a carrot and a stick, you know?
And what you don't want to have happen is people then make decisions not to allow their land to be used for agricultural purposes because they don't want to be restricted down the road.
Yep.
And, you know, they say, well, we don't need to pay this anymore. You know, so sometimes it's the unintended consequences sneak up on you.
Good example is a lot of us could be in a tree growth program, have chosen not to be, that isn't worth the hassle. Not as well. Simple as that. I don't want to structure something similar in this area which supports what Steve just said physically.
Ray, could you speak up just a little bit? I'm having trouble. Well, um, but you said something about why you chose not to go into tree growth?
Because it isn't worth the aggravation.
What was, what, I mean, without getting into deep weeds, what exactly was, um, an issue with that?
Should I decide to do something with half of that acreage I've got? The penalty and the grief involved in it isn't worth it to deal with the state.
Got to get a forestry plan, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but the penalty's at the end too, and, you know, going through the whole, it, it just isn't worth the aggravation.
You end up paying the taxes that you.
It's like getting a divorce, Barney. Not something you want to do. Um, no, I mean, where, where I'm going with that is you're going to make it attractive without feeling that we're sticking a door. Just tell them upfront, hey, we don't want you around.
Well, I, I, but it seems to me, I think, with, with talking about borders, buffers, making sure that all, everyone in an area is fully informed about what's going to happen. And dual use, if you've got land and it was hayed, so that's agricultural. If you have land you're taking out of agricultural production, I don't think it's a great deal to say, can you make the effort? And again, you don't make it so that if you don't do this, you don't get approved. But is there a way to work with others and perhaps a butters to put the land, if it was agricultural, can we at least have part of the land being used that way?
I think that's, that's the goal.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think anybody, I mean, I guess I shouldn't speak, I do not want the message to solar developers to be that we don't want you around. I just want a more clear set of guidelines around the development. And I understand the viewpoint of, you know, there's a lot of leeway in the existing language for the planning board to come back to them and ask for certain things, but that just leaves things, you know, to be interpreted differently over time as the makeup of the planning board inevitably changes over time. So why not just, you know, revise this now, include some clearer language now around things that we can all agree upon and then without saying, no, we don't want solar, period, because I, I don't think that's the goal of this group.
Yeah. No, you should. It's just being so over restricted is where I'm coming from. Okay. I don't disagree with you whatsoever. You've got to have standards that are going to be, that's got to be done a certain way.
Yeah.
Protecting bodies, no question about it.
I mean, just so I understand where you're coming from, do you think that the things we've discussed so far are over restrictive?
No.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Good.
I think one of the problems that I've heard from around is that, you know, like the dual use is you make it a requirement, what if they can't get someone to bring their sheep over? It has to be somebody that's reasonably close, has the ability to bring their sheep over, you know, and truck them over and.
I mean, there, with that said, there are outfits now traveling all over the Northeast and literally, they're, they're combining blocks, moving them, you know, we're going to hit this array this week, this array next week. Maybe we're talking New York and New England wide. I mean, it, it, that's why I say it just, it doesn't feel like it's really that hard, you know? But at the same time, yes, you also can argue, well, why are we setting them up for price gouging? Well, you have to have grazing. Well, these grazers, what are they going to charge?
Yeah.
You know, $700 an acre, you know, I mean, that would be outrageous, you know, so I, I can see that too. Flip side of requiring. You know, here, three times the price of what somebody with wheat whackers is going to charge. That's not really, that's not really the point either.
Right, because even with grazing, somebody has to monitor grazing activity.
Oh, yeah, and that's what happens when you do, yeah, it's not just dump a sheet there and come back in months. Yeah. It's just a way of keeping the site actually an active agricultural development instead of just it being a loss, which currently is what happens on pretty much all of the sites. It's, they're all generally agricultural and they're all lost agricultural.
Something, something that I, I haven't read or researched yet, crops. If they are raised, would have to be spread over a larger area because you have to have more open space between the arrays. But could somebody that wanted to grow crops make it happen between rows of the arrays?
Yeah, they definitely could. It's being done in places. Yeah. Yeah, but, but most developers are going to pocket that because
They have to go higher.
They have to go higher, which is a lot more expense in the installation. Like, I mean, I actually spoke with Long Road, one of Long Road representatives when we were on the ridge about this. Because I, I was asking about, you know, why can't you at least raise these things another two feet in that example, you know, so, so they could, it's not just sheep, you could run cows under it, for example. He claimed anyway, well, you know, it costs, it costs somewhat more in the, because then suddenly we have to have a boom man lift out here to install the panels and do all the work and all of this, so. And that, I, really that little tiny bit of aluminum is going to cost that much more that you can't raise these up, but he was, it was not just that. The installation cost, it makes the project not as favorable. But yes, that is being done too. But, but those are the sorts of projects that the developers argue you need some sort of incentivization at the rate payer, the PUC needs to be approving incentivizing there, which is being done in other states. They will say that the main rate payers can't absorb the cost, which you know, I don't think, I mean, electrical rates right now are insane, so. But there's also that factor of, okay, well, how much of this is, how much money are you guys, it's developers doing these projects? Not just, yeah. I don't think.
Well, one of the things that might be, you know, sort of planned going forward would be if we look at what some of the other towns are doing.
Yeah.
Tops and runs with.
Well, you guys met with cousins, right? Eric out of Auburn? Interested in a little? No?
Okay. I thought you were talking about my cousins for a minute. I don't see my cousins in the water.
I, I've talked to a few people, you know, I, you know, there's been a couple of studies that have been done, Maine Farmland Trust did a report. They reached out to a number of towns. And I talked to them about our ordinance.
Okay.
Um, and Kennebec Land Trust had an intern give some paper, I think.
Yeah, so I've reached out to Maine Farmland Trust about this issue and the other open space issues that the conservation mission has been working on. Uh, if we were interested, they said that, you know, we could, at one of our meetings, they, you know, we have to send a staff member potentially to talk to us about how we might make the project more favorable to agriculture anyway. But they do also have a guide that they put together. I mean, actually, yeah, so and they talked about Steve and I and Monmouth is mentioned in that that report that they did, although they highlighted other towns to have more active mechanisms around regulating the solar developments.
Can I ask Doug? Um, have, I'm aware that the town of Dresden has sent questionnaires to certain people. Again, I have a very good friend who's a goat farmer in Dresden. Um, and we had a long conversation about solar arrays and then she sent me information. Um, I wasn't able to access it, but I'm, I'm wondering, Doug, if through Maine Municipal or any of that, if you have, are aware of other towns doing anything to see what the town people, townspeople think about solar arrays? Are you at, at all aware of anything?
I don't know.
Okay.
No, but I can look into it.
Okay.
Go to, you know, check out the MMA website and see what, they have any uh, anything there about it all.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Doug, questions still on the executive committee?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Um, another thing to discuss that we raised in our letter was just, should there be a provision about the density of these projects in any given area? Is that possible, logical, what that would look like? You know, a perfect example is supposedly right now on the South Monmouth Road, there's the project that's under review. Then the lot that is the old AD electric site also supposedly has a lease on it of the housing public plant, where did you guys know? You know, to the re-provision saying that you can't have sites have to have a certain distance between them to prevent any given area of town becoming just completely inundated with these projects.
Is it that area right now in demand because of the substation?
I mean, that area will be in demand in perpetuity because of the substation, because that's the area that's always going to be most desirable to the solar developers. The shortest distance in the substation is the shortest distance they have to upgrade the power, so. My understanding is within two to three miles of the substation is their hotspot, so.
So when you start talking density, I can, you know, see in that area.
Yeah.
We take the backside of North Monmouth towards Wales, somebody decides quote unquote, and then six months later, second one popped up. Now, that going to be a problem? Do you get a warm city?
Are you saying if, is the density going to apply strictly to the town borders or is it going to include the budding towns or?
No. It would be, if it becomes part of the ordinance, it would be townwide.
Right.
Playing something like that. And I guess I'm, I'm saying, I'm asking, do we want to do that because there's certain areas in town where you could have three of these things and it wouldn't bother anybody probably. But other areas, yeah, you don't want three of them sitting there. In proximity, you know, close proximity to each other.
Right, well, I guess into the trick of, you know, suddenly what you just said is suggesting some sort of zones where things are desirable or not. That's a bad word, so.
Yeah.
So, but I also think you'd have a hard time finding any portion of town where it doesn't ruffle a group of people's feathers. It's fairly well settled down. It's not.
That's, that's another question for Maine Municipal. Because again, we're talking about Monmouth, but as you said, Ray, you know, Wales is right there. Um, and they is there any, again, I, I'd be curious if there is any discussion going on as to neighboring towns? So that, again, right over the border, you've got all of this stuff. We do, we try and, and be very, very careful and then the town next to us or Litchfield or wherever it happens to be, they just say, oh, yeah, put them everywhere. Um, so again, is there any, has there been any conversation at Maine Municipal or, or, I mean, that's the only organization I could think of um, that, that that kind of conversation would even begin? Unless there's something else, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we have no control of what happens in any other town, so I guess really, yeah, I mean, we're talking about Monmouth and what we want Monmouth to look like, then operate like. Yeah, I mean, I can certain, I mean, I'll check in with the person, my contact with the Farmland Trust again and see. I can either just ask them questions or if people wanted, whenever we schedule a next meeting, to see if they could join us, you know, by Zoom probably. That would be helpful for.
Yeah. You know, on the density issue, the only thing we have in our ordinance is we have a provision on communication towers. And the goal was try to not have them, you know, either cluster them or not, you know, just not have them all across the ridges, the ridges.
Yeah.
And I think there's some language in the ordinance about that.
That'd be interesting to see what that language actually is. Is it a certain number of feet?
I think so. I think it may have been within miles. I don't know if I can get into the library.
Want to go out there? Come on.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't know if I have the password. Used to, because we used to get onto the wifi. I think this, this room has wifi. I can look and see if I can find that one.
I mean, to me, that just at least makes it so that no particular part of town or people, you know, suddenly it's not like I'm uh, you know,
Surrounded.
360 surrounded. I mean, and again, I'm not, not because of the light from my house, for example, right now, I can look up at the ridge and I see the 40 acre project up on the ridge. I do the look to the south, there's going to be a 10 acre project right there. It's just how many, you know, and, and I mean, solar does just feel so different than the forms of building that we're used to in this part of the world because of the pace at which it can happen. What other development has Monmouth seen in the last 40 years that 40 acres, boom, the entire thing is covered with structure? And that's.
Well, the next thing that's going to be storage.
Well, that's, yeah. So I've been waiting for somebody to buy the Sierra property down there and, you know, storage units, gas station and whatever else. Yeah, I think the, I think. Whatever else. Yeah, I think the I think we propose a TIF zone to go down there. Oh, you know, capture all the value it's going to get at. Just think about that today, driving around from our last economic development meeting. It's like, well, there should be a TIF zone because. You know? Somebody's gonna buy that eventually, cover the whole thing with stuff.
Having served on taxation for eight years. As far as I'm concerned, TIF is a four letter word.
Oh.
But that's just me.
All right. Well, I never brought anything up about TIF, but I'm.
Why?
That's good.
Why, Bonnie?
What?
Why? Why is it a four letter word?
Because I saw it abused terribly and towns left holding the bag. Um, and there there never seemed to be any consequences. Somebody would come in and they'd get a TIF and they'd get all of these breaks and then five years later. They were gone and the town was left again, town after town, left holding the bag. Because, yeah, people want. I mean, it's not unreasonable to want some development growth and and. In your town to to. Create income. That's perfectly reasonable. But again. Time after time, they were abused by. People who. That's all they were interested in. They were not interested in the town. So.
There's no 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 protection in that in that law? For the uh. Vanity for the town?
Not enough, not enough. And and I mean, the land on the ridge here, um, I would say about five years ago. Um. Jerry Smith, I remember one day we were just chatting and he said that the town that that they had put the land on the Ridge Road into farm and open space. And I am, I know what farm and open space is, and I thought, great, twenty years and nothing's going to happen. It'll, you know, it'll be agricultural. Well, yeah, except if you've got enough money. You pay the fine and you're you're done. And. Some kinds of corporations and wealthy people just pay the fine. And that's it. It's not. For us, average Mainers, yeah, it's a big deal. It's just like with tree growth. Your average landowner is going to get hit with a big fine if they don't. Align with all of the rules, but a big corporation, they don't care. You know, twenty thousand dollars, hey, that's no big deal. So.
Flowing around to the solar developers. And part of it is the incentives that they've gotten, federal level. And state.
Yeah.
Enormous. And that tax thing, I'm I'm pretty positive about that they're getting very large tax breaks in the state.
Yep.
The state is covering the the taxes on their equipment.
Yeah, it's probably the personal property tax.
Yeah.
Which a lot of small towns don't really pursue generally.
No, no.
You don't really.
And every tax incentive I saw in eight years. Again, average town, average townspeople, average small towns got left holding the bag. Um, and somebody has to pay those those taxes. Somebody has to pay when the big trucks come in and tear up the roads. Sorry. I'm gonna go.
I won't say tip again. Sorry. Wrong committee. Now my committee is confused.
A wash for them with that, or they pay Monmouth property that.
That my understanding is the state is paying down Monmouth fifty percent of the appraised value of the tax. That's that's my understanding.
Go through the. Covering that's the that's the right. It's a it just goes direct, Portland goes directly to the town and and from those two store issues.
Yeah, I I think so. That's that is my understanding, but I guess I'm not gonna, you know.
Well, there is something in the personal property tax. Generally. That. There's some type of credit provision. I mean, I haven't looked at it in years, but it is that the state reimburses. The municipality to some extent on personal property taxes, but the the developer or the owner has to. You know, make some type of application. To do that. Um, I mean, that's just generally. That in my office of the doctor, we get a form every year that we gotta fill out, you know, what do what do we have for computers or down?
But I do, we're concerned, little guy with the Cooper farm up there on the hill. Uh, not just with the shooting, but uh, with the uh. He supposedly put a million dollars into the plant, uh, as well as maybe a million dollars into that uh. Orchard uh. And uh. Since you know, we didn't, uh, I don't know, we didn't, it's not a per- personal property tax.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I would take it there, you know, if there's equipment. Like freezers or. Washing machine, you know, wash the brood or before it's. Locked up or whatever. I mean, there. There, there could be a revenue source there. And as they say, a lot of small town systems need to be, you know, you don't have the wherewithal.
Yeah.
I don't think they'll have a haze, you know, or. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm already worried that we've created a massive headache for her with our.
Yeah.
That went up so much. We've had quite a few people contact us. I'm wondering how many people are contacting for the rent.
So on the on the towers, what we what what's in the ordinance says, um. Any facility located in one of the town. Ridge line identified as a. Visual restore in the comprehensive plan. Shall be placed so as to minimize its silhouette against the sky. No tower shall be installed within two miles of another tower. Unless it is planned and permitted as a multiple user site. Or camouflage so as to. Simulate the natural feature of the environment. So there was sort of an attempt on sort of a density issue, but that's that's the only thing we currently have.
Yeah.
And.
But there is some precedent for setting a density.
Yeah, and I guess what we're up against though is. If you've got the power station there. You know, is that? Is that where you want to have those developments? For good or bad, a good, bad for the neighbors, good for the town. I mean, that's one of those.
It becomes kind of a hub.
Comes, yeah, it becomes a hub. But yeah, it does mean. That that area, I mean, it's only the large tracts of land. There's not. As many as there used to be.
It's only large tracts of land that can be developed or?
Well, no, that's that's in vicinity, close vicinity to to. I mean, there's yours, there's. The other Smith family property. That AD Electric, but are there any other large parcels now on? On the South Monmouth Road or nine and one twenty six? Say other than Mike Sears. In Monmouth.
Right, I mean, you can get.
You have to look at the gas maps.
I mean, there there are, especially if you start to include, okay, well, we're going to clear cut this woodlot or that woodlot. I mean, at one point, solar developer, another solar developer was going to put panels on. Charlie Hilliard's property there right across the Wales line, and then they were going to, it was going to cross this this development. Going to be quite large. It actually was going to be a commercial solar project of five megawatts. Maybe they were going to do like three different five megawatt projects all stacked, which isn't technically legal anyway, but it all fell through. But anyway, it was going to come through. Onto the Bonin Road was going to be another, there was a landowner on the Bonin Road in Monmouth, who they were going to clear cut, they were proposing clear cut, their woodlot off. But panels as part of this larger project there. Now that never got the permit, but that was something that contract had been signed on or intense had been signed on anyway, a number of years ago now. So. I don't know. Yeah, I mean, inherently, yeah, the focus of the development is in South Monmouth, you know, um. At the same time, if the project's large enough, then especially if free base power is close by enough, then that definitely can get farther from the substation. You know, projects like this, though, also illustrate that smaller lots, I mean, there are a lot of lots in the South Monmouth Road that are. Ten fifteen acre lots, you know. So. Is is another way of doing this? Would it make more sense to set cap the? I mean, I I would guess I would for a density. Something that density in the ordinance, but another way of doing it would be to cap the megawatt production, I guess.
Yeah.
Though that gets trickier because megawatt. You would hope that megawatt potential is going to change over time as technology evolves and everything else and. Um, but that's how these projects are all regulated and look at how those projects are committed. It's all these community solar projects for this program through the state have to be below five megawatts. So most of them. Like Jerry's families, it's four point nine nine megawatts.
Yeah, four point nine 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 nine.
So it's not, you know. That wouldn't be. Yeah, I mean, that is that is a standard that's used for permitting. As we say, we can only have ten megawatts of production in the town of Monmouth, you know. That feels more arbitrary to me than a density. That doesn't, that doesn't get to the density issue. That's still.
Are they gonna stay?
One after one after one after one, and then somebody. Ten miles away on the other side of town, sign the contract five years from now or something. Well, we can't do it because we've met our ten megawatts. So it's irrelevant.
And is the state or the federal government going to preempt? The area so that the towns can't do that type of regulation? What what happened? There was a lot of litigation over towers.
Yeah.
And and the developers have been able, were able to successfully. Litigate because. If, you know, they say real license. You know, there are federal licensing involved that kind of preempt. State. Uh. Ordinance and a lot of times, you know, we. We dealt with a couple. We were able to kind of reach some compromise on their projects. But. Always in the back was the fact that they could kind of go to court and probably lose. Were too restrictive. I don't know whether that gets kind of spill over into the solar.
I think right now the market's so hot that it like developer. Feels like they don't want to play ball with the town or just go to go to the next town over. I mean, it's just, there's just so much potential when you look at what's coming down the pipe with the Inflation Reduction Act and all the incentives to that. You know? And I still can't get a clear picture on the South Monmouth Substation, what the actual capacity of that is, although in talking to an electrical engineer that works. On the transmission lines in Maine, who's like, well, they can upgrade that substation no problem and booting up tremendous capacity.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Dave's Dave Mills. That was, I think he worked in that area. Was involved in that project and he said, yeah, that has. A lot more potential capacity than. You know, and I thought of, I had heard at one point, no, there's only so many. But he said, he thought.
Got gotten a wide range of numbers from, I mean, because Long Road, somebody from Long Road was also telling people in town that that was going to max up the capacity of the substation. That was another thing that was being said. I'm sorry, your five megawatts definitely does not match up with the capacity. I had another developer tell me that there's fifty megawatts of capacity on the substation. So everybody. Seems to be getting very different.
I don't know if CMP would share that information with us.
Well, that's the whole. Nobody wants to share any information from the solar industry. So. Um, so what else did we, what else is in our letter that we haven't talked about?
I think that works.
I think you know, maybe the only other thing we raised the issue just a concern about just uh, trails and things like that in town. Yeah. But whether that's something that can really be.
Yeah.
Governed by, you know, voluntary access anyway, but not really.
Yeah, so the one on the South Monmouth Road now, uh, there's a snowmobile trail. And uh. The owner said he's gonna have, he's gonna relocate it. Of course, he said clearly, he said, I don't have to do this. You know, I'm letting them use it now. And he said, I've been in touch with, I can't remember, someone, probably the Cuckawagon Trailways or whatever. But the plan there is to move the trail. To toward the Fish Hattery Road behind his barns.
Yeah.
And come around, sort of around the site. Yeah, I mean, it's. I I mean, they don't want anybody, I think, within the perimeter, you know, outside the perimeter. They may be open to. Snowmobile, concrete, hiking, whatever, but. They don't want, they don't want people to ever get around it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, they're required to fence them all and they also, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, if there was a trail system in Monmouth, if there was an established. Sort of trail system. Then I think we could. Kind of regulate around that a little bit.
Just for the established trail system.
Yeah, because if you don't have it, if it's not there.
Yeah.
Then it's too elusive to. Focus on it.
Would that only be if it was actually deeded into all of the?
I don't think so necessary, you know, even if there were. Yeah, I don't know whether you have to have conservation instruments or. Remember at a discussion when they. Were doing the expansion of. The medical center. We kind of did a little walk around and and there was a clear trail. From this housing project on the Blue Road. You know, coming across the property of Kripstow. And, you know, they were saying, well, we're gonna, we're gonna block that access. And I said, well, isn't it nice to have? Kind of a path through town, you know, that people can walk on. Of course, they said, well, but you see what happens on that. You know, people are drinking and throwing their AM the bottles.
Kids have used that trail for years.
Yeah. Yeah. Um.
Yeah. So that that issue probably for this is not worth exploring. So, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I suppose you could put in when there are established recreational. Trails. That efforts will be made to. Um, accommodate, accommodate.
Yeah.
Right. Just as a recommendation, not as a requirement.
That's probably a reasonable thing. You're you're dealing with big tracts of property, but.
Because there are trails that go all. All through. I mean, I guess it's not one major trail, but there certainly are trails. Because they come up the ridge. They come through the woods and go up the ridge.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I kind of made a point about that when we went up the Long Road Development. They're talking about the hunting, that there were people that still. Went down and hunted behind the development. And they were fine with it, so they said, the owners.
Yeah, well.
I think noise, I just remembered, noise was the only other thing that we talked about.
Yeah. Yeah, so. As we saw up at Long Ridge, there are those, what do they call them?
Invertors.
Inverters and. There, they talk about, I mean, the developer that comes in is saying, well, we're going to be back far enough and. And they get issues of whether you make them put up some kind of screen and. Concrete, something rather than.
A sound buffer.
Sound buffering to keep the sound from. I mean, they're claiming. That we won't hear it. I mean, I know I know when we went to the. Long, by the time we walked back up the hill, you couldn't really hear it.
Mm hmm.
Right, but on a smaller project like this, now, and maybe the inverters are also smaller.
Yeah.
But your distance to the nearest butter's dwelling in particular might be a lot smaller.
Yeah.
So. But I don't know, I just. Well, I mean, what is the standard? What's already in the? In the rules? There must be something in the rules. I mean, what is the standard? What's already in the, in the rules? There must be something in the rules about noise.
Yeah. Yeah. We have noise standards and it's, you know, so many decibels at the property line. And again, you have to have the special equipment.
Yeah. Dave Shaw has a meeting.
I think he might've had to go out and get one for, I can't remember who was trying to do something, but.
I also have certified media cell media.
But there is a, a noise and it's too low in our ordinance. You know, for the real, being practical. 85 dBA is the acceptable standard.
Is it, is it, is it also a certain continuity of that noise? I mean, is it, you know, or, you know, or is it just period? There cannot be noise over 85 dBA.
Level of one minute. I mean, there's a standard, it's page, look at 51 and 52 of our ordinance.
That's lower than 85.
Residential, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, you have a residential abutter, it's supposed to be 60 uh, at night dropping to 45. If you have a commercial abutter, 65 during the day, 55 at night. And again, the residential time is 10:00 PM. Which is, well, some people are night owl. Uh, industrial is 7, 8 and 60 depending on the time of day. So, yeah.
For one minute a day.
Well, the maximum permissible sound pressure level of any continuous regular or frequent or intermittent sound, source of sound induced by any activity shall be limited according to the abutting use and time period that's listed below. Sound level shall be estimated at a level four feet above ground at the property boundary of the source. And then it talks about the meter and standards.
So maybe that's already all sufficient then.
I don't know. Yeah. Yeah.
That's pretty quiet.
It's 16.
I mean, it also, yeah. So is this, is solar commercial or is it industrial?
Well, no, it, it, the new, no, it, it depends what the abutter is.
Oh, okay.
So if the abutters are mostly residential, um, it's 60 at the, at the boundary.
So this, in every instance, I think of the town, it's 60.
Yeah. Yeah.
This, yeah, other.
But it's something to look at, you know, that was, I hadn't really considered noise on the solar until we went and looked at that other project. Cause it was quite loud next to it.
Yeah. Yeah. And in talking to an abutter, um, I was asking, I was asking her about the noise, cause the other thing is those, those panels are rotating. So when they, you know, the echoes through the entire thing. And I asked her if you noticed that. She said, no, except for every morning, I think it is, when they go the whole way around, then I guess it's, you know, a brief moment in the morning where it's quite, quite loud, but then the rest of the day she's. Now they're up on top of the hill, you know, if they were down the bottom of the hill, the noise go downhill. But there's like.
I can hear the train that night in my house.
Yeah, me too. I can hear cars all the time, you know, like.
You're, you're close to.
Near 126 from my house.
Oh, really?
Two miles.
Yeah.
Um. Can I just, um, I, cause I know this was an issue with the ridge um, development and I just looked through the information from Novel and maybe I missed it, but is there a bond? Is there um, provisions for bonding for when the project is dismantled?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I, I, I looked, I couldn't find it, but all right.
Yeah.
I believe you.
The, the state now requires it. I don't know if it did when we first got involved in this, but state also has a bonding requirement. But we required some kind of bond payable to the town. Well, it's getting close to eight. We could come back in a couple of weeks. We can talk to the Farmland Trust. We could look at some ordinances if people want to spend a little time.
Yep.
On the noise end of it, just to give you some idea, the, the noise in the real world as we function, okay, is in the 80s. Vehicle exhaust numbers in the state of Maine is acceptable up to 95 dBA. Okay. So that's why I say Monmouth is really on a low scale with the ordinance.
Yeah. I mean, that, I'm, I'm happy to reach out to Farmland Trust and, um, yeah, see, see what else exists for ordinances. I also tried to take notes during this. Do you want me to like write just some of the issues that I talked about with some inspiration?
Yeah.
Different ideas about them.
I mean, we're supposed to keep, if any committee is supposed to have minute.
That's one thing. Where's?
Can we also find out about any other towns? Um, and I'll, I'll reach out. I, I had trouble getting in touch with her, but I'll reach out again to my friend in Dresden. But I would be curious as to, excuse me, if there are other small towns that are thinking about the possibility and what they're, what they're doing, or if they're doing anything.
No, I think a lot of towns are. I mean, I had someone call me from, I don't remember now what town it was. They want, they wanted a copy of our ordinance and they sent it over and they could look at it. But they had sort of picked it up from somewhere, maybe the Farmland Trust or whatever. So let's see, today's the first. What, what are people thinking?
With the caveat that, uh, that we're expecting a baby on the day.
Yeah.
So with that caveat, then, you know.
Four weeks, let's see. We've got, next week, there's a select board meeting.
Right.
Then we've got a week off.
Right.
And another select board. So maybe the four weeks from tonight would be a good for the whole.
You want to go that long?
You want to go two weeks?
I just, I mean, what's our, when do we have to have something back to the select board by? And especially if you want the planning board to really, we will tear through it, then.
No.
I, I just feel like, two weeks is fine. I'm just saying, you know, I made email and say, I can't make it or can we reschedule or something? You know. I can't, I can also. That's right. Yeah.
Do they still have Snugglies?
Uh, yeah. Okay. Let's, and will we do it here again? Dennis going to keep setting us up with the owl?
Well, we might, the room might be available up on.
Okay.
Early kind of snuck in.
Yeah.
Before I.
Yeah.
Away.
Yeah.
I, I didn't, I just didn't want to interrupt.
No, they had already. I had heard they were, you know, they, um, Laurie had told me that they had a meeting, that she had a meeting. And I guess it wasn't widely noted, so. And I wish I could well, ten years.
After the third notice, seeing as to where we were at the meeting, I was going to suggest TJ's.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
Today at Zoom, capacity at TJ's.
Doug, who knows, RSU two. You know him well, Jim Grantle. Who, who left that we needed is John Hammond. John was very, he was the head of the committee, a chair. With Richmond leaving and then a whole lot of, you know, sparkle money or something coming in and, uh, it was really important that we had somebody very financially to, so, and Jim. It's an issue with the, the creation of the RSU for us, so. You know, it's, you know, ideal.
So is the next meeting the 15th?
15th. 15th.
15th?
Today's the first, it'll be the 15th.